I can read the call?
Okay, Stella, please read the call.
Notice of a public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a workshop, an executive session, and a regular meeting on Tuesday, May 18th, 2010, at 5:00 PM, 5:45 PM, and 6:00 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall Federal Building, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Workshop item number, letter A, project Citizen Projects by Stell Middle School Students.
Can we have the students from Stell Middle School please come up? It's always a, it's always a good time to see the Project Citizen Group come before the City Commission. So, students, we really appreciate you coming by before the commission and we look forward to hearing and seeing your presentation. So, again, welcome. And if you all want to, whoever's the first one to come speak, you can stand by the podium.
Good afternoon. We are students at Stell Middle School and our project is called You Talking to Me. The dilemma we're facing is people using handheld devices while driving. This action seen all over the city poses a risk to citizens and visitors of Brownsville. Our mayor tried to have a ban placed but it was turned down by the City Commission. Out of the 95 licensed drivers we surveyed, 92% thought that driving should be the main concern for anyone who drives a vehicle. When we also asked the question, do laws restricting the use of cellphones while driving violate the rights as a citizen, 67% said no. A few disadvantages to this policy will be that it will take citizens' time to adapt to the policy and it will take money to enforce the policy. The advantages to this policy will be that it will take, will be that the roads will be safer for everyone now and later if the ban is in effect. Now here is Jessica with our alternative policy.
Thank you, Casey. We have made laws in ordinance in effect that in relation to our proposed ban, House Bill 2730 and the House Bill 339 says that all drivers under 18 years of age can use a wireless device while driving more vehicle. A new ordinance in Austin forbids sending or receiving of any text messages of them while driving. House Bill 55 prohibits the use of a cellphone while driving when in a school crossing zone. Our survey shows that 20% of our citizens send or receive text messages of them while driving. People using their phones while driving is a deadly action, but our proposed bans can stop this lethal act. Now here's my answer with the class policy.
Thank you, Jessica. After researching our alternative policies, we got together as a group to form our class policy. Our class policy is that Brownsville needs a law restricting the use of handheld device usage while in a vehicle. Currently, there is no law restricting cellphone usage in a vehicle, but most people favor a prohibition of handheld devices. Drivers feel no rights are being violated if a ban is to be set. Our belief is that restricting cellphone use while driving in the city will make everyone's life safer and easier. Taking away cellphone privileges in an automobile does not violate state or federal constitution. We surveyed 95 people in the community. 71% believe that drivers should use enhanced device while driving. 81% support laws restricting texting while driving. And 79% stated that laws that restrict cellphone usage while driving do not invade the rights to privacy. And all politics aside, we all think this is a serious issue that needs to be addressed, regardless of whom sent it forth. On behalf of Stell Middle School Project Citizen Program, I would like to thank you for your time.
Thank you, guys. I wanna, I guess I want to say that the issue is really, really important to the city. As you know, this is something we looked at a few months, a few months back and it wasn't very successful. The state's done something, as you outlined in your presentation, which is a very, very positive thing. And I think it helps all schoolchildren and families each and every day that school's in session by having the, by having the ban around school zones. It's a sensitive issue, but it's one that I'm sure we can come back and look at it again and, and maybe, you know, and maybe do something a little bit more concrete with it. But I do appreciate you all taking the time to research, to study, and come and present it for the commission. It says a lot about, about you individually, says a lot about the students that are coming from Stell Middle School, which I was a former warrior at Stell and my entire family. So I'm, I'm proud to see you guys here. And it's, it's also, it's also refreshing to, to see the type of youth that we have in the school district. And I, there's no doubt in my mind that one day you guys will be extremely successful in some field and if not, you might, we, we might see you up here one day as well. So, so I appreciate you all making the presentation. And like I said, you know, let's be in communication. This shouldn't be the last time that we see you. Don't hesitate to call us or email us. I know I've received an email from, from one of you in regards to meeting and I believe Commissioner Zamora might have met with you all. But we're constantly trying to work hand in hand with the community to, again, address the needs that obviously you all, you all see and you all know about. A year ago, we, we, our city, our parks director, Chris Patterson and I, were out with Stell and I don't know if you all were there, still part of the Project, Project Citizen, but we met about some of the issues that were going on in Oliva Park. And Chris did a great job of, of his presentation of what we needed to do. And more from my perspective was more policy down the road, again, long term. And how do we address those issues that obviously you all brought to us? So, so let's keep the door open, let's communicate. And again, I really, really do appreciate you all coming by and sharing this valuable information before all of us.
Commissioner Camarillo, if I may interject, I believe they do have one more presentation to do.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is Anaide Delvan and I, and the name of our project is Ruby. Our problem is that some of the buses in the city do not have ramps or sidewalks. This makes it hard for disabled people to get on the bus. This same problem was found on the bus right across from our school. When students of Stell Middle School Life Sports Program go on trips, they take the city bus to help them learn about being independent. This is not possible for students in wheelchairs since they cannot even get under, on the bus canopy without assistance. They must go through uneven grass and sometimes muddy terrain. If people in wheelchairs ever need to use the bus, they will not be able to get under the canopy by themselves. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Can I, can I say something quick? Go ahead, Commissioner.
Couple of years ago, we, the commission approved a board, a special needs board. So, and that should be coming out later this year. And hopefully, the funds that this board will be able to use can address stuff like that. So save all your paperwork because once this board starts up, then we're gonna be tackling projects like that. That's, uh, special needs, Commissioner Zamora. So, uh, yeah, just so, just let you know that the City of Brownsville does take this, these projects serious and the need for, to support our special needs people in Brownsville, we have to, have to start a, we're gonna have a board and it's gonna address those issues. Okay?
Commissioner Gallin.
Thank you so much for coming, kids. And you keep looking and directing our attention to those important things. I've driven by there a million times, I've never noticed that there was no ramp. So I mean, that, that obviously is a very important issue. And I wasn't texting when I drove by.
It's hard, eh?
But, but you keep looking and telling us because we need your help.
Thank you. Commissioner Zamora.
I want to applaud you and your class and especially your teacher, Mr. Liao, for, for your civic engagement, for being involved at such an early age. And I look forward to more presentations in the future. Did you guys already go to competition? How did you do? Did well? Well, congratulations and I, and I hope you have a wonderful summer.
Congratulations, guys. Keep up the good work and be safe during your summer break. Only a couple of more weeks of school left, right? Well, enjoy it, okay? You'll have a safe summer. Don't hesitate to come back. Thank you, guys. Next item, Stella.
Item B is Midicultural District Activity Update.
Is anyone here from the Midicultural District?
Good afternoon, city commissioners.
Afternoon.
City manager, city secretary. First of all, I'd like to thank you all for inviting me, Commissioner Zamora, for inviting me to come here again and give you an update on the Midicultural District. I'm sure most of you all are aware, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. And please know that the PowerPoint presentation is really for those, oh, good, thanks. This PowerPoint presentation was more for when we go out of, of our city. When we go to Austin, San Antonio, and hopefully, the nation. So it's not really for us that we know what, what we already have. But at the same time, there is plenty of people here in Brownsville that don't realize that we have a Midicultural District and what a treasure it really is. In front of you, you should have a brochure and you should have our mission statement and goals in there that you can review. If you look at your brochure, I'm just gonna go through the brochure real quick. You open it up and there's a map that's gonna tell you all the different entities. And you open it again and it gives you pictures and a little bit of history of each organization. Okay? Vision of the Midicultural District. Of course, Roy F. Midi and Joanne Cole for the Midicultural Foundation. We all know that they are ones that, through their vision, we were able to have such a beautiful park. The funding for the Dean Porter Park restoration was in 1998. Of course, surrounding area home to most of city's cultural organizations. The Midicultural District was established, of course, in 1998. It spans between Sixth and Seventh Streets, area between the Expressway and Washington Park. The membership is built up of five city commission appointees and over 15 members in our organization. We meet at noon, the first Wednesday of every month. And I want to invite all of you to please attend. We do meet at the Gladys Porter Zoo, except for the summer months. During the summer, we usually pick a restaurant because most of our organizations have summer programs for children, so our facilities are pretty much booked. So we can let you know ahead of time. Our mission, to promote and enhance family-oriented historical, cultural, and educational activities within the Midicultural District. This is exactly what we try and do. And I'm gonna go through it pretty quick, just so you all know. This is, again, this is a presentation that we do outside of Brownsville. They don't know that our zoo is one of the top zoos in the United States. They don't know that we have more than 1,600 animals, over 26 acres of tropical plants. So, this is what they get to see about Brownsville. The Midicultural District, for the last, they've been meeting for many, many years. But within the last five years, we've seen a different growth. We've seen where our museums and of course, for example, other entities like the farmer's market, Sombrero Festival, Amigos Artistas, other organizations, we have all started working together to promote this area. I've also worked with Bean Ayala, with the VCBB, where we've distributed many flyers of these brochures out into Texas. Okay? Tourist Texas, there was a lead that they got through Parade Magazine and we've been able to go through them. But this is what you can see, what they will be looking at. This is a PowerPoint presentation that is taken hopefully all over the country. I've started here locally by educating some of our rotaries and lines clubs and other organizations as well that I've asked to present, or I've called myself. The Camille Playhouse, these are all organizations that are found between Sixth and Seventh Street. We have also tried, we've also been working with the City Parks Department. I don't know if you've all heard what is in the makings for the fall. I'll let you continue to view some of these pictures. Y'all can ask me any questions, by the way, as I'm going. A little bit more, and let me just give you a little bit more of a background. These organizations have worked cooperatively to promote the orderly growth and development of the district as a tourist, cultural, and education attraction. It is our goal to create an ambiance through signage and attractive streetscapes so that when you enter the Midicultural District, you know you are in a very special part of Brownsville. The Midicultural District received a grant from the Brownsville Foundation for Health and Education for $17,500. With that grant, we were able to get 30 full color banners, which some of you have seen, between Sixth and Seventh Street. They're orange, they're hung between those Sixth and Seventh. And more than 12,000 color brochures, which you have in front of you. And we also have now a website that you all can log on to, which is WWMidiculturalDistrict.org. Some of our future plans include a Holiday Christmas Village in 2010 in partnership with the City of Brownsville Parks and Recreation Department. This will be free to the public. It will be located in the Dean Porter Park area. Will open the week of Thanksgiving and will close the first of the year. The committee project advisory team is made up of professional, professional and energetic volunteers. We would like to have a workshop to present this to you, probably in the near future. And we invite you to spend a day or a weekend and experience, explore, and enjoy the Midicultural District. And that's pretty much my presentation, that's pretty much our update. And we look forward to working with the city with just about any entity of the city to promote our area for tourism. And that's, that's where we're headed. That's where we would like to go, more than anything tourism. Any questions?
Stella, we are doing a great job. Appreciate what Midicultural's been doing. It's obviously looking great out there and the new sign with the flag posts and all that. It's just beautiful. It really enhances the, enhances that, that part of town. So, thank you and the members for all that you all are doing for the community. And, you know, please let us know however we can help to keep up the great work.
Right. Thank you. Do you want me to tell you more about them? Well, I don't know if the commission would allow me that. I have it here. Hold on. I can tell you, April 1999, the Cultural District again approached the City Commission to consider naming it Midi F. and Joanne Cole Midi Cultural District. Through the efforts of the Mides and the foundation, their mass generous gift of $3 million to the Dean Porter Park renovation and only created a nucleus from which our city would generate new growth and vitalization for many, many years to come. And they, of course, Roy Midi was originally from Brownsville. So, that's pretty much what I have.
Thank you. Item C.
Item C, Valley AIDS Council and Youth Community Services Update.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for inviting me to be a part of this evening, especially Commissioner Zamora. I'm gonna give you a little background. Valley AIDS Council actually was founded in 1980.
State your name first.
My name is Bob Smith and I'm the Executive Director of Valley AIDS Council. We were actually formed in 1987 as a Speaker's Bureau for the impending issue of HIV and AIDS and the impact that it would have in the Rio Grande Valley. We had no employees and we had no funding. By 1989, we actually had begun our first funding and it began to serve patients in the Rio Grande Valley who had or were at risk for infection of HIV. By 1994, we actually had received funding through the, from Washington for, to open our first clinic. Then by 2004, we were, we were asked by Washington to expand and to pick up the Corpus Christi area. So we then moved from a 4,000 square mile area to then a 12,000 square mile service delivery area. So we're now responsible for the Coastal Bend area as well as the Rio Grande Valley. By 2008, we had continued to grow. We'd opened our first clinic in Brownsville. We have a one-day-a-week clinic here. Our offices were located over on 12th Street, under the Hotel Economical, and is now located at 857 Washington Street. In addition, we have opened the Corpus facility in 2004 and we're preparing to open a McAllen medical facility this year. But, that's the history. What I'm here to tell you about, and we're very, very excited, in collaboration with the City of Brownsville, the Brownsville Independent School District, the Brownsville Health and Education Foundation, if I said that right? If not, forgive me. United Way of Southern Cameron County, the Substance Abuse Task Force. We're pleased to have opened a substance abuse treatment facility in what is now, locates now the Old Boys and Girls Club. The space has been donated by the City of Brownsville. And we are delivering substance abuse treatment to the young men and young women of Brownsville, Texas. We have already received our United Way of Southern Cameron County allocation and we are pending receipt of funding, perhaps through CDPG, that application is pending. We are also planning on enrolling a new project in, in the fall. It's YPI, which is a prevention program for substance abuse. So it's youth who are at risk, but yet not, not yet already, not already substance abuse addicted can be enrolled and we can work with them and their at-risk behaviors to hopefully never see them as a substance abuse patient and hopefully never see them as an HIV-positive patient as well. So we're very excited about being here. We're very excited about this new opportunity. In February of 2000, of this year, the board actually expanded our mission statement to include substance abuse treatment in addition to HIV services. In fact, we have a board member with us tonight. We have Mr. Sal Martinez. Sal is one of our new board members. And I wish to extend my gratitude to Mr. Charlie Kabler for his role in help working with the city and the school district and all the powers that be to actually make this come to be. Do you have any questions regarding us or our new endeavors? Yes, ma'am.
If, if a, you know, 16-year-old, let's say, comes to your facility because they've had a problem with drug addiction, can you give us an idea of what you do for that young person? In other words, is it mostly social service or counseling? Or what is it that that person would, would be able to have?
Wonderful question and thank you for bringing that to my mind. This is actually licensed substance abuse treatment in an ambulatory fashion. What we will be doing is we'll be providing individual therapy as well as family therapy and group therapy, but we don't feel like that that's enough to stop right there. One of the treats of being in the facility that we're in is we're going to have access to a lot of resources that will allow for physical exercise and socialization. One of the things that the Brownsville Health Foundation, I know I'm messing this up, but is it BFHE? Well, either way, one of the things we got was we got a Wii system. So even until the gym is finished, we can go ahead and have activities on site. So really, we're looking at how do we socialize better? What kind of individual, group, and family therapy can we provide these, these young people? And we've hired our LCDC for Brownsville, who starts next week.
Wonderful.
Great.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Your referrals, where do you get your referrals from? Are you getting them from private organizations or from the courts? Or what do you, how are you going to get, other than walk-in clientele from the, the center?
Well, BAC is keeping us quite occupied already. Lynn Black is a personal source of referral. But beyond that, we are receiving referrals from Judge Neese. And then the BISD, other counselors are providing those referrals. We are open to anyone. So if a doctor wants to make a referral or if any source that wants to make a referral for substance abuse treatment, that's available. And then in the fall, the prevention program.
And the, the staffing at the center is going to be what?
Right now, we have four LCDCs that are employed by Valley AIDS Council. We have a case aide, receptionist, that, her name is Sandy Bustista. She starts today. And then Claudia Ocampo starts next week. And then we have John Chapa, who is the coordinator. Chris Salinas, who can't be with us tonight, is the Director of Substance Abuse Services. And I too am an LCDC and I'm the Executive Director of the agency.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir. The biggest difference is licensed treatment. The state of Texas requires that if you're going to deliver treatment services, that you must be licensed by the state of Texas. And in addition, your staff who deliver the services must also be licensed. And that's the big difference, is that state recognition and licensure. If you don't have the state licensure, you cannot say that you provide treatment. You can say that you provide substance abuse services or support services, but you cannot provide treatment without that. And that's the big difference. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate those of you who are at the open house.
Item D, Discussion Regarding the Brownsville Community Improvement Project Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2010.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, City Commission. This evening, I'm here to present. It's gonna be a bit small for y'all to be able to view. Again, this is for fiscal year 2010, our projects. Again, the funding application, its guidelines were viewed by the BCIC Board. This is a process that the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation goes through annually. The application was released in October of 2009. The applications were due December 1st of 2009. The board goes through the applications to review both the merit of the applications and also the reasonableness of the cost. The, then they recommend applications for funding. At that point in time, it's required by law to go through a public hearing process. The board did hold a public hearing process on May 6th of 2010. Then applications are recommended to the City Commission for funding and that's the process that we're in currently. The request amounted to $510,598.5. The project budget was for $100,000. The first application, the City of Brownsville submitted an application for the North Brownsville Kickbox Complex. Again, the idea there was to try to eliminate the need for portables. The, because of the urgency of trying to get that particular project done, what the City of Brownsville requested was for the application to be withdrawn and to have a contract amendment for another project that had an existence. The board did approve that and provided a contract amendment for $78,477 and that particular project is almost completed. Again, the photos are very hard to see under the black and white. The other application was Oliva Park Improvements. Some of the things that we are looking at doing is the basketball surface pads, goals and rims and lighting upgrade, and also doing the tennis service pads and lighting upgrade. Again, it's to try to prevent further deterioration of the park and $70,000 is being recommended for that project. being recommended for that project. The next project was the City of Brownsville Commemorative Air Force. It's to rehab the CAF RGV Museum. The benefit is to try to reinforce, prolong and enhance the use of vintage aircraft and artifacts displayed and for the meeting use facility. Again, this has been in a series of phases. The first phase, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and the second phase, forty-five thousand was, was provided and in this phase, thirty thousand is being recommended. The building is a city building in which the Commemorative Air Force Museum is currently housed in. The next project is the Gladys Porter Zoo. It's a bridge surface restoration project. Again, they're trying to maintain the aesthetics to be able to continue to attract tourists. What's being recommended is thirty thousand and the match that the Gladys Porter Zoo is providing is twenty-two thousand, four oh six. What the photos showed was basically the deterioration of those walkways and even to show the unevenness that has occurred in those walkways and the difficulty it provides for people who may have any kind of walking impediments. That is in essence, the applications that BCIC did receive and the recommendations that the board is putting forth. Are there any questions?
Any questions, comments?
Salina, based on, I have a question, ma'am. Based on what's been submitted, what does that total to and what would be, what would be left over for, for funding?
As I mentioned earlier, the project budget was actually a hundred thousand, as we discussed during the budgeting aspect that they did, the board did put money into contingency and they did exceed that amount. If you look at the actual project total amounts, they're recommending a hundred and thirty thousand, but that doesn't include the additional seventy-eight thousand, four seventy-seven. So you're talking about two hundred and eight thousand, four seventy-seven that they allocated toward projects.
Thank you.
One question. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, five forty-five, can we wait five minutes?
Yeah, for the executive, the executive session will be next.
It says five forty-five, do we have to wait five minutes? We do?
Mark, do we have to wait five minutes? Second.
Are we going to recess?
Is that in spare time?
No, it's five minutes.
I just want to say that Roy and Charles Meade, the ones that gave...
A million?
Three. Three million dollars. Those were classmates of mine. They were pretty sharp basketball players. They didn't play football, but they played basketball and other sports. So I'm glad that we have at least those Roy and Meades that have a lot of money. I hope we have some more coming that have a lot of money. Do you know anybody else? Those are the people that we want from Brownsville.
Would you like to follow in their footsteps or?
Well, I'd probably give fifty bucks or something.
We'll take it.
I'm very, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir.
Okay. But I'm glad we have those two young guys. Where are they, they live in Houston? I think one of them had an insurance company voided. So I'm glad they're, they, don't forget Brownsville.
That's right.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
[inaudible]
Mark.
Stella wants to talk to you.
I think after you. Why didn't you send us a couple of days in advance?
I don't know. I just got that. You have a good answer?
Wow. Not really. We get to get stuck in events. It's kind of put in a spot. I mean, I think she's going to be able to do it. I don't know. We've got to get up and at least kind of date in advance.
Can scouts come forward and take a pledge, please?
Please face the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible. One indivisible. Amen.
Thank you. Pastor Brad Bird, you need some indication?
Let's remain standing to pray. Father God, we come to you to, once again, thank you for your grace, your mercy and your love. Lord, I ask you to help each of us to understand what each other's going through. Lead and guide each member of this commission tonight. Help each of us to hear each other and respect what each other has to say. Lord, I ask that the outcome of this meeting in every way be that which is good for the city of Brownsville, good for the community and good for your kingdom, Lord God. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you so much, Pastor. Can please be seated. Is scout master Mark Blakeford here? He's not here? And the Eagle Scout left? Okay. We just saw this. Okay, we'll go into the mayor's report.
No, ma'am. We have action.
Item A.
Action on item discussed in executive session. Action on executive session item as advised by legal counsel in executive session.
Based on the discussion in the executive session, could I have a motion? Can I have a motion? Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve based on the recommendation of legal counsel? Okay. We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Okay. Mayor's activity report, I'll be very brief. Cite the meetings and events and going to Washington, I think is very productive. Brownsville having, making its presence over there, looking for funds or raising awareness about the projects we have online and the support we need from Washington. Also went to Victoria on the WEAR project. Basically, that was my report here. Commissioners report, Commissioner Samora?
Yes, I wanted to congratulate Commissioner Gowen for her efforts and the city staff, all the participants for the Biggest Loser competition and all the winners on a very successful program for the year and I'm happy to hear that it's going to be an annual event. I had the fortunate opportunity to host my own Biggest Loser event at Veterans Parks and I want to thank PAWS, the VFW, Baya Health Club and the Navy Recruiting Office for being in attendance and supporting the event and participating. I'm also proud to say that PAWS did have an adoption take place at the event, so it's a very good thing and we look forward to having them participate at future events. As far as city streets, we do have an update on a couple of streets in my district. One of them is Coffee Port. I know that some of you have been a little aggravated with some of the construction going on, but we're going to see some improvements here very soon in the next couple of months. We're working on storm sewer improvements as well. And as far as Old Port Isabel Road, which is a road that I share with Commissioner Atkinson, next month, we'll be working on eight oh two to Winter Haven RV Park and we're looking at the overlay, overlay to be completed. As far as the VFW, I wanted to announce that they will be having a fundraiser coming up on May thirtieth. They will be hosting a golf tournament at the, which, which golf course was it? The one at the, at the university?
Fort Brown.
Fort Brown, that's correct and they're looking for participants, volunteers and sponsors, so please keep them in mind. And they're also having a flag sale. They're selling flags for two dollars a piece, so if you're interested, just stop by the VFW. They're located off of Price Road. And that completes my report.
Then we have Commissioner Charlie Atkinson.
I'd like to speak a little bit on the sports park. I was there this Saturday morning at seven forty-five to meet Commissioner Rose Gowen. I'd like to thank her for getting me involved in this. I, I did walk a mile and I was able to...
He really did. He really did.
I really did. I really did. I walked with Commissioner Gowen. But we were able to talk about the many things that we can do at the sports park as far as wellness and I, and I look forward to working with Commissioner Gowen on some of these projects that I think will help the youth of Brownsville and to start thinking a little healthier and to do more activities out there at the sports park. One of those, one of those events that we're having this next six, seven weeks is the seven-on-seven flag football for BISD. Right now, we're, we're really excited about all the kids that are going out there from BISD. We have over four hundred kids showing up on Mondays and Thursdays to play flag football and it's a way to keep them exercising, keep them out of arms' way by being elsewhere. Here, they're exercising, they're at the sports park. This Thursday, with the group of my boys over there, Two Live Crew over there, Gabe and, and the, and the crew, we're going to be out there interviewing the coaches and the kids and getting them excited about what they expect next year for high school football in Brownsville. You know, we, we got to show support for, for our kids in Brownsville and I'm a big, big, big advocate of that. So we'll be out there this Thursday. If, if nobody's doing anything, go out there. There's like three, four hundred kids out there just pouring their hearts out to play seven-on-seven, to get in shape and to, to learn the game of football. Our Beach Cove, we had a tournament this last Saturday. It was a successful tournament. I think it was, yeah, was it Saturday? No, the Saturday before, I'm sorry. And USA Junior Volleyball came down and hosted an event. We had a lot of people participate, a lot of females, females and males and the winner of this volleyball, Sam volleyball tournament were eligible to go to the regional tournament in Daytona Beach. I can't tell you who won, but I know one team won and, and there was a team from Hannah, it was my daughter's team and I'm proud of my daughter Lauren and her teammate who went out there and participated and they won, so they have a chance to go to Daytona, so we're going to have to find some way to send her there. So I'd like to congratulate my daughter for showing up and winning that tournament for the junior volleyball, USA volleyball. The mayor advised everybody here that we went up to Washington. I'd like to talk a little bit about that. I was very, very humbled to represent the city of Brownsville and Washington DC. I think the Commissioner Gowen and the mayor, myself and some city staff, we all went there with, with a purpose and we all, I believe, had a great, great time advocating and lobbying for our projects in, in Brownsville. You know, we, we were united and we, 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 we reached out to many different congressmen and the senators and they're, they're, they're starting to hear about Brownsville and they want to help us, you know? One of the issues I have regarding the sports park is EOC is a emergen, emergency operational center. What this is, what this entails is a type of multi-use facility that can be used to house people that are stuck out during hurricanes. As you know, in Brownsville, since we, we, we have a lot of impoverished areas, if we learned anything from, from Louisiana, we learned that the Superdome was a place to house a lot of people that were in distress. So one of our efforts with, with my board, which is the Brownsville Community Improvement Center, we went to lobby on a multi-use facility center that will house a substation for police and an EOC, emergency operational center, a command center, so where we can still provide services for people that are in need of our help during these type of situations with hurricanes or tornadoes or whatever natural disaster. So we lobbied for that and I was really excited about that. Salam Ortes, actually, I met with him and, and we all met with him and he was really excited about this because this is a chance to, 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 you know, we talked about convention center, but this was a twist on it to where it could really help the community during a, a critical situation. So he was happy about that. He's looking forward to helping us find grants to support this emergency operational center for the city of Brownsville. So as far as that, that's it.
Commissioner Atkinson? Commissioner Gowen?
Thank you. As the commissioners have stated, the Biggest Loser challenge ended last weekend. I would like to thank the School of Public Health and the City of Brownsville Health Department for conceiving of the idea. There were many partners that made, without which we would not have been able to make the three-month program work and that would certainly be Parks and Recreation Department, Channel Twelve and all you folks, Jerry's staff over there that put up with our phone calls and our, and all of the tapings that they did and being at each event, thank you very much. All of the entities of United Brownsville that participated on a particular Saturday and as well, my fellow commissioners, thank you very much. Now, for some, and, and we will be doing, as Commissioner Samora said, this is planned to be an annual event, so stay tuned for that. Now for the results, there were, in Brownsville, we lost at nine hundred and thirty-nine pounds. That's half a ton. Now that is the least that we lost and the reason I say least is that there were many people that told us they weren't going to be out of town the final weekend or that they had to work, so they couldn't come to the final weigh-in. We also know that several teams in, had members on them that were over the age of fifty-five, so they couldn't technically compete, although they did lose weight. One in particular from the port of Brownsville lost fifty pounds, although those fifty pounds didn't get officially recorded. So we lost at least a half a ton, which is pretty good for, for a first effort. Specifically, seventy-eight percent of the participants that finished the program said that they did lose weight. Twenty-nine percent or almost thirty percent of the women, of the people that completed the three-month course were women and thirty percent were men. The average pounds lost by a woman was six point five and the average pounds lost by a man was eleven point three. So that is very encouraging and very exciting. We had many stories of people that didn't know they were diabetic but found out because of the program, many people that didn't know they were hypertensive, many people, including myself, that no longer have to take hypertension medication because of their weight loss during the program. So thank you very much, one and all. Second thing to let you know about is the Pepsi Refresh Grants that are going to be starting to, able to start voting on July first. The grants writers from the city of Brownsville are encouraging us to log on to the Pepsi Refresh site and register to vote. You can, as, starting July first, if you register, vote ten times each day for a project that Brownsville has submitted. So it's very important that we can get online and vote for Brownsville and that's, that's really exciting. Last, but certainly not least, is with respect to the Brownsville Farmers Market. We received notice last weekend that the United States Mexico Border Health Commission has recognized the Brownsville Farmers Market as a model of excellence in childhood obesity. That is only one of two model awards that they released or awarded this year, the second being for a tuberculosis project in children. So we're very proud of that. In large part, that comes because of the recognition of the collaborative work between the city and the School of Public Health and many other entities that makes the market what it is today. So that's very exciting news and we'll be on the map for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. An announcement, Ben Steele, Baton, Baton Death March Survivor and POW. There's something being hosted at the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art Reception, May thirty-first, Memorial Day, following the silent march at Veterans Park. Mr. Steele, Mr. Steele has become a main character in the recent New York Times Best Book. 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 We received notice, uh, last weekend that the United States Mexico Border Health Commission has recognized the Brownsville Farmers Market as, uh, a model of excellence in childhood obesity. That is only one of two model awards that they, uh, released or awarded this year, the second being for a tuberculosis, uh, project in children. So, we're very proud of that, in large part, that comes because of the recognition of the collaborative, uh, work between the city and the School of Public Health and many other entities that makes the market, uh, what it is today. So, that's very exciting news and, uh, we'll be on the map for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. An announcement, uh, Ben Steele, Baton, Baton Death March Survivor and POW. There's something being hosted at the Brownsville Museum of Fine Art Reception, May thirty-first, Memorial Day, following the silent march at Veterans Park. Uh, Mr. Teal, Mr. Steele has become a main character in the recent New York Times bestseller Tears in the Darkness, The Baton Death March and Its Aftermath. Another Baton Death March survivor was Brownsville native colonial, uh, Hosea W. Worthington. The collection of his poetry in letters home was compiled into a book, Hell and Beyond. Copies of both books will be available, refreshments provided by the Filipino American Association, located at six sixty East Wrinkle Street, parking off Seventh Street. Call for more information, uh, five four two oh nine five one. Okay, um, Proclamations, Community Learning Center?
Commissioner, come here.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I'll be brief. Last week, we had a downtown workshop that was held by the Planning Department, uh, specifically Ricardo Gonzalez, uh, at the ITech. We had about a hundred, a hundred and thirty people come and, and have a, have a dialogue session with city and staff and, and other people from around the community about revitalization efforts in downtown. Um, I wanna thank them for all their hard work to put it together. I wanna thank all the residents and the community folks and business owners and prospective business owners that came and participated. Um, it seems everybody's kinda championing around the cause of revitaliz- revitaliz- revitalization for downtown, and, um, and so I appreciate their efforts, I also appreciate the commission's efforts to look at some special projects that will be coming to us in the near future. So, again, I wanna thank Planning Department and Ricardo Gonzalez for all the hard work, uh, as well as students, uh, architectural students from the university and other folks who have really helped, uh, helped the city, um, and, uh, and, and downtown business owners. I wanna, no, thank you. Um, I wanna also discuss, you know, over the past week or so, we've had some businesses in downtown too, in fact, that had burned down. Um, a lot of people asked a lot of questions as to why this came about and how this happened and what, what are we doing? All I can say is that it's obviously unfortunate to see a building in downtown or anywhere, um, burn to the ground, um, but please know that the city, through building and code enforcement, will be working with each of the business owners in downtown to ensure that COs are properly displayed, but not only that, but the buildings are in, kept up to the manner in which they're supposed to be. Um, I think it allows us a time to kinda reflect and at, at the same time, be proactive in terms of ensuring that these buildings are being kept up to cold and, uh, ensure that people aren't doing things that they're, that they're not supposed to, or they may not be aware of. So, we will work with our, our downtown business owners to ensure the safety of all the residents and people that love shopping downtown, uh, as again, as we wanna make downtown a little bit more vibrant. Uh, last, as, as we reported last city commission meeting, the West Elizabeth is open after months of work and reconstruction. Can't stress enough how, how thankful I am, one, to the federal government for providing the resources to help us reconstruct West, uh, Elizabeth Street, but also the, the crews and all the people that were involved and, and, and making that work happen, uh, engineering and, and all the other staff. Uh, it's a, it's a blessing to the district, District Four, but also to every, and anyone who has to travel in that area and that part of town. So, I wanna thank staff for their efforts and their hard work to making this project, uh, a reality. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner. Proclamations, Community Learning Center at Cunningham Manor? Is, is somebody here to receive it?
Anybody here from Cunningham Manor?
Anybody here from Cunningham Manor? And then let's go to the next one. Uh, Brownsville Fire and Police Departments? Who's he, who's here to receive that? We got police, I know, and we got fires, so somebody's gotta step up.
Mayor, and, and if I, Mayor, if I may add, you know, we, uh, Commissioner Longoria, we ask that this be, uh, be presented, um, to Fire and PD for the hard work and the dedication that they've given to the fire, the recent fires in downtown, um, being back-to-back, being in the middle of the night, um, our crews, our, our, our guys and our women, men and women have been working diligently to, one, stop the fires so they didn't spread, but two, to make sure that people are a little bit more vigilant and, and obviously, there's more protection in the area. So, we wanted to thank the firefighters, our EMS, and Brownsville Police Officers for responding quickly and doing the jobs that, uh, doing the great work that they do, so we wanted to take this time to recognize them.
Uh, the proclamation, Fire Chief and Police Chief, if you'd come forward?
A proclamation, the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas commending the Brownsville Fire Department and the Brownsville Police Department for their work during the recent emergencies. Whereas on May seventh, two thousand and ten, at approximately one twenty-seven AM, the Brownsville Fire Department received a report of a building on fire in Europa Usada, located at eight oh two East Washington Street. And whereas during the five hours it took to control the blaze, thirteen units and twenty-five firefighters from the Brownsville Fire Department responded and expended some two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water in combating the fire. And whereas on May ninth, two thousand and ten, at approximately two, two ten AM, another fire was reported at the Hotel Económico, seven oh eight East Elizabeth Street. And whereas during approximately sixteen hours it took to control the blaze, thirteen units and another thirty-five firefighters responded and expended another two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water in battling the fire. Whereas throughout both fires, the Brownsville Police Department was on hand controlling traffic, maintaining order, and keeping the peace while the emergencies were unfolding, working as a team alongside their counterparts in the Fire Department. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby commend the Brownsville Fire Department and the Brownsville Police Department for their stellar work in protecting the life and the property in our city. Done on this, the eighteenth day of May, signed by our mayor, Padem Omada Junior, and the rest of the city commission.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, we thank you very much for honoring both our departments for the efforts that we did on these two fires. Um, I was present in both of them, and I can tell you that everybody tried their best to, to be able to control those fires, and we thank you again for this.
I'd like to read this one, I'm very proud of, uh, these two ladies. First of all, Alma Cardenas, I've known you for a long time, and I firstly congratulate you for myself and as, as part of the commission. Let me read this proclamation, it's a proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, congratulating Alma Cardenas Rubio, one of the, as one of the best in Texas. Whereas Alma Cardenas Rubio is a product of local schools, graduate from Gladys Porter High School, and earning a BA in Liberal Arts and a MA in Educational Leadership from the University of Texas at Brownsville. And whereas Alma Cardenas Rubio began her teaching career at Gladys Porter High School in nineteen ninety-four, and in two thousand was promoted to Assistant Principal of Central Middle School, and in two thousand and three was elevated to Principal of the Stato Middle School. And whereas, in her leadership role, the Stato Middle School achieved the coveted Texas Educational Agency's Recognized School Award and granted the Accelerated Schools and NASA Explorer School Recognition. And whereas Alma Cardenas Rubio is a member of the National Association of Middle School Principals, Texas Principal Association, and Association of Brownsville Educators, and fights time to teach Sunday School at the Brownsville Church of Christ. And whereas, in May of two thousand and ten, Alma Cardenas Rubio was one of, one of two Brownsville Independent School District Principals, recognized as the best at what they do by the HEB Grocery Company, and received a ten thousand dollar award for herself and a twenty-five thousand dollar award for her school, presented by Charles Butt at an awards banquet in Houston. And whereas, her husband Eduardo Rubio and her two sons, Manuel and Lazario Rubio, are extremely proud of their wife and mother on the rec- on the reception of this prestigious award. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter and said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Alma Cardenas Rubio on its, on her recognition as one of the most outstanding secondary school principals in Texas. And we further wish her great success as she pursues her career in education. Done on this day, the eighteenth of May, two thousand and ten, signed by, signed by our mayor, Padem Omada, and the rest of the city commission.
Would you like, would you like to come say something?
First, I'd like to include my three daughters, 'cause if we don't mention their names, they're gonna get upset. Katie, Sally, and Brittany, I wanna say thank you to my family, my husband, and my two sons. But first of all, I just wanna say that no one award is possible without the community. So many times, this commission has come to my campus to do presentations, to do Principal of the Day, to just do visitations, to make presentations, contributions. Um, the success of one person has always contributed to the people that they surround. And I'm so blessed to be here at the Stato Middle School. I've been here since I was in fourth grade, I went to Egley, Oliveda, Porter, and it is such an honor today to be in this courtroom. Twenty years ago, my father did federal cases here, and I could never walk in because I'd get upset at you. Today, I'm in the podium and receiving this award, so it's an amazing journey. Ms. Gowin, actually delivered two of my babies, Mr. Omada, I've known him, without him knowing that he knows me, and Mr. Camarillo has served two times Principal of the Day, and Mr. Atkinson, I've known his sister who taught me leadership. See, the world goes around and around, you need a whole community to be successful, and today, it's proven. Thank you.
Again, proclamation, and I'm gonna read it, and before I start, I wanna say, Sharon, you know, I love you. I know, I've known her for a long time, she's a great friend and she's a motivator. And she, she, you see her with kids, you know why she deserves this award. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna start off by, the proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, congratulating Sherri Stout, one of the best in Texas. Whereas Sherri Stout, in nineteen ninety, nineteen eighty-six, received her BA in Elementary Education from Graceland College, and in nineteen ninety-eight, earned her MA in Educational Administration from the University of Texas at Brownsville. And whereas Sherri Stout began her teaching career in nineteen ninety-six with the Los Fresnos Consolidated Independent School District as, as a third and fourth grade teacher, and in two thousand and one was named Assistant Principal at Laredalis Elementary in Los Fresnos, moving up in two thousand and three to Principal at Lopez Riggins Elementary, also in Los Fresnos. And whereas, in two thousand and six, Sherri Stout was named Elementary Curriculum Director for the Los Fresnos CISD, and that fall was named Principal at Benavides Elementary School in Brownsville Independent School District, a position she holds to this day. And whereas Sherri Stout include, among her educational experience, many development, development and educational credits, including service as a principal mentor, teacher mentor, student intervention, teacher staff development, and her professional development resume includes that of a Harvard University Summer Leadership Academy intern and Ruby Payne English Language Learner Strategies. And whereas Sherri Stout als- was also honored with the State Exemplary Award for Benavides Elementary and at, uh, Los Fresnos School District, Teacher of the Year, and, uh, and at Los Fresnos Elementary Administrator of the Year, among many others. And whereas, and in May of two thousand and ten, Sherri Stout was one of two BISD principals recognized as the best at what they do by the HEB Grocery Company, and received a ten thousand dollar award, which she's gonna take me to Vegas with, for herself and a twenty-five thousand dollar award for her school, presented by the Charles Butt at an awards banquet in Houston, Texas. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate Sherri Stout on her recognition as one of the most outstanding elementary school principals in Texas, and we further wish her great success as she pursues her career in education. Done on this day, the eighteenth day of May, two thousand and ten, signed by our mayor, Padem Omada, and the rest of the city commission.
I also want to reiterate what, um, Ms. Cardenas says, it does take a community, and it's an honor to serve, um, this community as the principal of Benavides, um, the Benavides family. I thank them for allowing me to be, uh, represent them at their campus. It, it continues to humble me, um, because I do, I love going to work every single day, and it is a great honor to serve the community in this capacity. And, um, thank you all so very much for taking the time to honor us. And Alma, it's been a pleasure to celebrate this, this, uh, it's, we're just very proud to represent Brownsville and, you know, the educational field, and thank you very much for taking the time to, uh, recognize us. Thank you.
A proclamation of the City Commission of Brownsville, Texas, declaring May twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, to be Hurricane Preparedness Week in our city. Whereas Texas hurricane season officially begins June one and ends November the thirtieth. And whereas the six hundred and twenty-four mile Texas Gulf coastline, our area in particular, and the areas of Texas, hundreds of miles of islands, area vulnerable to the devastating effects of a hurricane or tropical storm. And whereas both public and private entities should develop emergency responses and recovery plans in accordance with local jurisdictions and local emergency management offices. And whereas the National Weather Service and the Governor's Division of Emergency Management are designating the week of May twenty-three through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, as Hurricane Preparedness Week in Texas and in Brownsville. And whereas the National Weather Service, the Governor's Division of Emergency Preparedness, and the leaders of Brownsville strongly suggest that all residents and visitors to this area be made aware of the potential danger of these tropical storms. Now, therefore, we, the members of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the Charter of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do here, do here proclaim, May twenty-third through the twenty-ninth, two thousand and ten, to be Hurricane Preparedness Week in our city. And further urge all our citizens to participate in hurricane preparedness activities and to play close, close attention and watch and warning instructions, and what, to watch warning instructions. Done this, the eighteenth day of May, two thousand and ten, signed by the mayor, Padem Omada, and the rest of the city commission.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, uh, I tell people all the time that one of the trade-offs that we have to living down here in tropical paradise is that we get the occasional hurricane or tropical storm. Uh, your emergency management staff in the city works hard year-round to prepare the city for any natural disaster or act of terrorism, um, and of course hurricanes is one of the things that's predominantly on our list throughout the year. Uh, your emergency management staff, Mr. Sigfredo Cantu, who's our emergency management administrator, Odile Al, who is our emergency planner, uh, myself is your emergency management coordinator, and of course- and of course, Mayor Padre O'Mara is our emergency management director for the city, coordinate throughout the year to make sure that we're doing as much as we can to prepare our citizens and our city itself. Quickly, this year, we had a visit just a couple of weeks ago by the National Weather Service Hurricane Hunter aircraft, which came here again. It's a rare visit. It's a rare event when the plane comes to the same city within four years. And we understand from good sources that they really enjoy coming to Brownsville because of the turnout that they get from the community. We had well over a thousand people go out during a very short period of time to visit that airplane. We got, for the first time, coloring books for children here in the Brownsville area related to emergency preparedness for kids. We are currently undergoing a website redesign. Right now, this week, in the city of McAllen, we've got the Texas Hurricane Conference going on. Mr. Cantu, in fact, hurriedly but not speeding, got back here to Brownsville in time for the meeting because he was up there in McAllen at the opening session for that. We've got several different departments that have folks at the conference representing your city. Next week, in terms of the public, we have a big event next week during Hurricane Preparedness Week. We've got the Brownsville Hurricane Fair, which is going to be on Thursday, May the twenty-seventh, at the Brownsville Public Library on Central Boulevard. That event will go from four to eight PM, aside from emergency vehicles and presentations for residents and door prizes. We've even got free food for the first five hundred people to show up. So we would really encourage local residents to come by. Upcoming events, different events that go on throughout the year. Again, this year, Mayor O'Mara is going to be hosting a meeting with local churches and trucking companies to work with them to prepare certain aspects of our plan. And we're also finalizing an emergency preparedness booklet to go out to residents of Brownsville. So it's been a busy year. We're working hard to make sure that some of these things take place. And thank you very much for your support. We encourage Brownsville residents to make sure that they're prepared, and then enjoy their summer here in Brownsville, Texas. Thank you. Yes, mayor, in fact, we just received word sadly just a few days ago that Jack Colley, who is the state director of emergency management, passed away very unexpectedly. Chief Colley directed Texas emergency management since two thousand and two, oversaw the shuttle disaster, Hurricanes Katrina, Ike, Rita, Dolly, and numerous, literally thousands of disasters during his service to the city, or to the state of Texas, as well as to the city of Brownsville. He was a strong advocate of the city and our emergency preparedness planning here. We've lost a great Texan this week. Are confident as well that Governor Perry will be appointing a replacement very soon that's worthy of leading the state through the disasters that we have to come. But we're, our prayers and thoughts are with the Colley family and emergency management throughout Texas this week. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you all for coming for, on behalf of Elder Abuse Prevention Month. A proclamation on the city commission of Brownsville, Texas declaring May two thousand and ten to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in our city. Whereas, people who are elderly or have disabilities have contributed to the general welfare of Brownsville by helping to preserve customs, convictions, traditions of many people of all backgrounds. And whereas, the residents are vital and integral members of our society, and their wisdom and experience have enriched our lives. And whereas, abuse of the elderly and people with disabilities in domestic and institutional settings is a widespread problem affecting hundreds of thousands of people across the country. And whereas, in two thousand and nine, there were eighty-nine thousand four hundred and eighty-nine reports of elderly and disabled persons abuse in Texas, of which fifty thousand nine hundred and thirty-six were confirmed. And whereas, elder abuse is grossly underreported because the elderly who are being abused find it difficult to tell anyone, and are usually ashamed, and sometimes afraid. Whereas, elder abuse happens to men and women of all income levels, all cultural and ethnic groups, whether they are in good health or incapacitated in some way, in poor neighborhoods and in suburbia. And whereas, many of the cases investigated by adult protective services in Texas involve self-neglect, and it is our duty as citizens to reach out to people in need. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby proclaim, May two thousand and ten, to be Elder Abuse Prevention Month in our city, and further urge all our citizens to help reduce abuse and neglect of all people who are elderly or have disabilities. Done this the eighteenth day of May, two thousand and ten. Signed, Pat M. O'Mara Jr., mayor, and the city commission.
My name is Rosie Cavazos, and I am one of the citizens from the community. We formed a year ago, Años de Oro, and it's a support group for adult protective services. We had not had one in Cameron County. In Oasis County, they've had one for fifteen, eighteen years. Hidalgo County has had one for fifteen years. And Adult Protective Services approached me, and we have formed here in Cameron County, in Brownsville, an adult protective service support group. And what we are is to support adult protective services on any of the needs of the elderly. And without adult protective services, we would not be able to sleep at night. I would like each one of the adult protective services people here to introduce themselves, because when anybody from the community calls them, they're there twenty-four seven. And abuse of the elderly, someone, when I was telling them out here that we were here representing abuse of the elderly, he thought I was joking. And it's not a joke, really. There's a lot of abuse of the elderly. Please report it, because it could be one of our own loved ones.
Firstly, I would like to thank the mayor, the commissioners, the city of Brownsville, the, all the resources that assist us with our investigations. We go out there, without them, we would not be able to do our job. Firstly, I would like to introduce our investigators, Ms. Sandra Martinez, say hi, Ms. Karina Botelho, Ms. Lupita Ramos. One of our workers is on leave, Elise Flores, myself, Martina Rendon, and our supervisor that was not able to make it today, Ms. Anna Perez. Thank you very much for all your assistance, and thank you. Thank you.
the sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and ten, to be Building Safety Week, and May two thousand and ten to be Building Safety Month in our city. Whereas, our city's continuing efforts to address the critical issues of safety, energy efficiency, and sustainability in the built environment that affects our citizens both in the everyday life and in times of natural disaster, give us confidence that our structures are safe and sound. And whereas, our confidence is achieved through the devotion of vigilant guardians, building safety and fire prevention officials, architects, engineers, builders, laborers, and others in the construction industry who work year-round to ensure the safe construction of buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month is sponsored by the International Code Council and International Code Council Foundation to remind the public about the critical role of communities' largely unknown guardians of public safety, our local code officials, who assure us of safe, efficient, and livable buildings. And whereas, Building Safety Month commemorating a thirty-year legacy of leadership, the theme for Building Safety Month two thousand and ten encourages all Americans to raise awareness of the importance of building safety, green and sustainable buildings, pool, spa, and hot tub safety, and new technologies in the construction industry. And whereas, each year in observance of Building Safety Month, Americans are asked to consider projects to improve building safety and sustainability at home and in the community, and to acknowledge the essential service provided to all of us by local and state building departments and federal agencies in protecting lives and property. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the charter of said city, and on behalf of all of our citizens, do hereby declare, May the sixteenth through the twenty-second, two thousand and ten, to be Building Safety Week, and May two thousand and ten to be Building Safety Month in our city, and further encourage all our citizens to join with this community in participation of all related activities. Done this the eighteenth day of May, two thousand and ten, the mayor and the city commission.
As we celebrate the thirtieth anniversary of National Building Safety Month, we are reminded of every present need for a public safety campaign. In nineteen eighty, a series of tragedies triggered the creation of National Building Safety Week to raise awareness of the building safety and fire prevention codes. This campaign is not only intended to raise awareness about the critical role of designing and building safer structures, but more importantly, to save countless lives in doing so. Under the guidance and direction of the International Code Council, as we, as public servants, are able to share vital lifesavings information with the citizens of Brownsville to build stronger and safer homes, building schools, and the places of worship. However, this is a job that no one, no one department can accomplish on its own. It takes the diligent collective efforts of departments such as fire, health, police, engineering, traffic, public works, planning and zoning, and of course, building inspections to educate and inform the public of ideas and means of keeping their homes a building, building safe. I would like to take this opportunity to recognize these departments, and to thank them for their hard work and cooperation, helping to keep the citizens of Brownsville safe. Thank you very much.
the downtown revitalization project, these are the students that were present and that have made this amazing design as part of the architectural program at the university. And I was thankful for Mr. Ricardo Gonzalez, for, Aramito, I'm sorry, Aramito Gonzalez, for asking us to recognize them for the hard work that they did. They've worked very, very close with not only their instructors, but with Ben and Aramito to do this, and to give people a visual effect of downtown, and, and how, how much of an impact it'll be by doing some things a little bit differently. So, students, I want to thank you all very, very much for your talent, your skills, and the time that you all put in class to do this, and to help all of Brownsville. Because, believe it or not, your efforts and your work have done just that. And so we want to recognize you, and again, very, very proud of you, and very, very proud of the instructors for, for teaching you. And I'm so glad that we have you here, here in our, here in our chambers.
Your proclamation, the city commission of Brownsville, Texas, recognizing UTB TSE Architecture Program team for assistance to the city of Brownsville. Whereas, during the spring two thousand and ten semester, the University of Texas at Brownsville, Texas Alamos College UTB TSE Architectural Program team assisted the city of Brownsville with a downtown revitalization project. And whereas, entities participating in the downtown revitalization project include the city of Brownsville Planning and Community Development, city of Brownsville Heritage, United Brownsville, and the University of Texas at Brownsville College Architectural Program. Whereas, the architectural students displayed their architectural model at the downtown area of the city of Brownsville at the downtown revitalization workshop held on Tuesday, May the eleventh, two thousand and ten. Whereas, representing UTB TSE were Jorge Avila, John Barajas, Isel Fernandez, Shahida Garcia, Beatriz Juárez, Gerardo Martínez, Aturo Rivera, Guillermo Rodríguez, and Elias Salivar, guided by assistant, guided by assistant professor Murad Abu Sayyid, and assistant technical instructor Eric Darboll Diaz. Now, therefore, we, the members of the city commission of the city of Brownsville, Texas, by virtue of the authority vested by the, by the chamber of said city, and on behalf of all our citizens, do hereby recognize and congratulate the UTB TSE Architecture Program for the assistance to the city of Brownsville with a downtown revitalization project, and further wish the team and its students great success in future endeavors. Done on this eighteenth day of May, signed by the mayor and the rest of the city commission. Congratulations, guys.
Well, thank you, commissioners. Thank you, students. The students really worked hard creating this project. Like I, I don't know if it was said earlier, or if you know, but this is a brand-new program at the University of Texas, Brownsville, and these students are going to graduate next year, and they're going to move on to bigger, bigger and better things, hopefully. And the next series of students are going to come in and help create a larger model, continue this model for the future of Brownsville. Thank you. I believe John Barajas has a few words.
City councilman, mayor, and on behalf of the students at the University of Texas, Brownsville Architecture Program, we would like to thank y'all for acknowledging our efforts. It was very tedious, and it was a long extensive process that we took. But hopefully, with the seed that we have planted for y'all as well, we take the next step, and hopefully initiating the advancement and the beautification of the, of the downtown of Brownsville, and take the next step in having a more beautiful Brownsville. Thank you.
You see, there are a lot of good things happening in Brownsville. It's not all negative. Thank you very much. We're going to go now onto our agenda.
We're going to presentations.
Presentation, environmental advisory committee report. Art Rodríguez, our health department director.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, tonight, I want to do a short and brief presentation of what, what, basically, an update on the advisory committee actions, and what I'm saying. And while I'm speaking, there will be a slideshow going on of the activities that occurred on Earth Day. Basically, Earth Day occurred on April twenty-second, and, or it was during that week, but on, on April twenty-second, we had a, a dry, a dry run, as you may call it. Basically, we reached out to the local communities, and on that day, they had an opportunity to, to run Brownsville as it would with, with no plastic bags. It was a, a day where we, as a committee, felt we wanted to see what both the citizens and the business community would, would face if we were to go live with, with this ordinance today. And the feedback that many of you heard, and we heard, was positive, not only positive, but overwhelmingly positive, such comments, and I'm paraphrasing, as what took you so long? Why hadn't this occurred sooner? And basically, we, we were surprised by, by the, by the positive response. The committee continues to work with, with local businesses, and presently, our goal at this point is to reach out to any business out there who has not involved themselves in this committee. If they have any concerns or issue about the day that this ordinance takes effect, we want to be able to sit with them and explain to them the, the specifics of the, of the ordinance. The local retailers so far that have participated have been very pos, very positive, and while many come in not knowing what the ordinance says, or what, what impacts the ordinance will have on them, once they become familiar with the ordinance, their reaction has been, we really think it's a good idea, what else can we do to, to help out with this ordinance? We, we would like to have another dry run day. We have not cemented a date yet. We're working with a committee. We're thinking somewhere along Memorial Day or Fourth of July, but that is still up in the air. At, at these events, we passed out bags, the four B committed some bags. We, we've been using reusable bags for different events, various city-sponsored events, and we're trying to basically flood the market with reusable bags. Our retailers are doing the same. The prices on reusable bags has been dropping steadily, and we have had other communities kind of look at us as a model of, of, of this ordinance. Much work remains to be done still. One of the issues out there is the, the exemptions, if there will be any, and if so, how we would get around it? Would there be a, a green fee that would be assessed for continuance of, of plastic bags for a period of time after it becomes active in two thousand and eleven? These are questions that, as a committee, we continue to face every week, and we're going to try and answer. There's also possibly, or surely, a, a, a future ordinance amendment that will come before you. We do not want to rush that amendment yet until we feel we have a good hold on what the issues are out there. We want to do this a one-time amendment, and, and basically be ready for two thousand and eleven. Basically, the fee, I meant, going back to the fee that I mentioned, we're hoping that that fee will be used exclusively for projects such as Trash Bash, or, or Cash for Trash, kind of like the, the ten years ago when we used to have kind of events like that. But the money would come directly generated by those who want to continue using plastic bags thereafter. And this is something for a very short period of time in two thousand and eleven, just to allow for that transition phase. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer any questions. This was just meant to be a short, brief.
First of all, I want to thank you, Art, for putting it together. I participated also, and I think some other commissioners participated. Going from plastic bags to, to two thousand and eleven, to eliminating them, I know it's going to be a, a big change for a lot of people, the way they do their shopping. But, you know, if, if they use their heads, they can adjust very easily. I went and bought a laundry basket right after I participated in this banning of plastic bag day. If you get a laundry basket and put it in your, in your shopping cart, and put all the heavy stuff there, that eliminates the use of, of plastic bags. So there's ways to get around using plastic bags, or buying those biodegradable bags, disposable bags that are, you know, that don't harm the environment, they're very inexpensive, or the morralitos that our, our parents use, or our grandparents use. You can buy those morralitos, which are bigger, and they're, they're more durable. But I think, you know, the community was very positive. Everybody I talked to at HEB and Walmart seemed to like the idea and accept the, the new ordinance, and I think it's going to be good for Brownsville. And I think we're the model for the rest of the state to follow, and I think that says something about Brownsville. I'm very proud that I introduced the ordinance. It took two years to pass it with the help of the commission, the citizens. A lot of people worked very hard on it, and I think, I think it's going to be something very good and positive for the city.
I'd like to add, and I didn't have as part of my presentation, that a lot of retailers have actually gone back to the drawing board and designed their own reusable bags. The shoebox industry, for example, out of the mall, has actually started to use shoelaces instead of plastic bags to carry your bag. Some of them have adopted the, the, the old twelve-pack punchhole system of carrying certain boxes. We've got Home Depot that actually has a bag that fits like a liner around the, the shopping cart, and, and I believe HEB is actually looking at some other alternatives for, for bags that are out there. So, I, I think this ordinance has catalyzed a, a big movement to rethink the way we, we were doing things in the past.
It's going to be nice to see a city with, without the plastic bags laying around the street everywhere, or the expressway.
Well, many times when, when we're asked about this, I refer back to, to back to two thousand and nine, I believe it was, when the, the expressway was littered with plastic bags, and then the example, again, of what occurred during Hurricane Dolly, and how we were able to, to basically clean out a lot. Public Works did a great job cleaning out, but a lot of what they removed was debris and plastic bags from, from our sewage.
Yeah, I think, in large part, recognition should be given to Rose Timmer. She worked very hard to get this ordinance passed with a committee and all that.
And we continue to, we continue to have healthy communities, many retailers, and, if I want to end this right now by saying is, we want to encourage other retailers who have not participated to make contact with us at, at the Health Department, and, and get informed, and we'll be happy to work with them and answer any questions that they may have.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
Okay, consent, agenda items, A through B?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve, second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item six?
Item six, consideration and action to appoint one member to the Brownsville Citizens Advisory Committee?
I, I got Raul Garcia, but it's subject to him filling out the, the application, if that's okay. We got a, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. He'll fill out the application this week. Thank you. Item seven, public hearing?
Item seven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty, twenty-ten dash twelve oh two dash G, to amend ordinance number twenty oh nine dash twelve oh two dash F, amending chapter forty-two, article three, section forty-two point one oh one, rates for city medical emergency services by increasing the basic life support non-emergency rate to three hundred and fifty dollars.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, about six, six, seven months ago, we increased most of it. With company learned Medicare has increased their basic life support non-emergency, so we're back asking you to raise it to three fifty, so the city won't lose out on any money that they can get from Medicare.
Okay, this is a public hearing? Anybody want to say anything on this matter? Okay, can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion to close, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Commissioner Samora, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item eight?
Thank you.
Item eight, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-ten dash two thirty-five point five nine, to amend chapter three forty-eight zoning of the City Commission, of the City of Brownsville zoning code by abending Article Four overlay districts, and amending section three forty-eight dash nine sixty-two intent, and adding section three forty-two dash eleven hundred oh one hundred residential office overlay district.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is the area of, for this application of the zero one hundred residential overlay district. But in the ordinance itself, it calls for specific criteria for the residential overlay district. It includes that, that this business types, which will be limited to professional offices. It, it describes the building and building construction, and it goes through the, it should only be one building excluding accessory uses. Building construction should not be done during the evening or night, night hours, nighttime hours, or holidays. Noise levels should be maintained as per applicable residential requirements. Buildings should be of single-story, of brick, stucco, stone. They should, the property should also contain private, privacy fencing. It talks about, it describes about site entrances and parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage, and other requirements. So the area here is, the area identified is the old zero one hundred. It was passed unanimously by the Plan, Plan and Zoning Commission for your approval.
This is a public hearing, anybody want to comment on this matter? If not, can I have a motion to close?
So move.
Motion to close, by Commissioner Tryani, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
Move to approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Tryani, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item nine?
Item nine, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero seven, to rezone from dwelling G to general retail G for lot eighteen, block nine of East Brownsville addition, located at seventeen oh four Coolidge Street.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a proposed mechanic shop on South Most Road. The properties are shaded in red, and it was unanimously approved by the Plan Zoning Commission.
Okay, this is a public hearing? Anybody want to comment on this matter? If not, can I have a motion to close?
So move.
A motion by Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Samora?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item ten, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero eight, to rezone from dwelling G to general retail G, three point seven five acres out of Sugar Mill Spur, CCDR volume twelve sixty-six, share, in share twenty-two located at three oh two Laurin Alley Drive. And item eleven, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero eight S, to allow light commercial-specific use in a general retail out of the Sugar Mill Spur in share twenty-two located at three oh two Laurin Alley Drive.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a proposed mini-storage business. The Plan Zoning Commission will unanimously approve this application to you.
Have a question.
Okay, this is a public hearing, go ahead.
Ben, in that area, there's old folks' homes, there's adult daycares, there's doctors' offices, is that where you want to put up?
This is, this is a very narrow strip of land that's landlocked, and they were, they're going through an entrance of a, of an existing office subdivision.
The entrance of Laurin, Laurin?
Yes.
It's right on the expressway?
Yes, and, and it's a little strip of land that, that cannot be utilized for anything else. They're going to have to go, their entrance will be through the offices subdivision that's there.
Who's the owner of that?
John Ortiz.
So we're, we're changing the, the ordinance so we can put, so he's allowed to put that there?
Yes, it's a specific use. First, the first case, the, is, is from dwelling, the first case is from dwelling to commercial, and then you have a specific use on the second one, to allow the mini-storage on that, on the third commercial.
What, what, what exactly by is it? Is it by that, that, those offices right there?
Yes, yeah, there's some medical offices.
Toward the front of it, toward the back of it?
Right there, you see? So the only way of getting into that piece of property is, is through that subdivision. So, so it's really a little strip of land that was left of all the planning processes that, that has, I mean, that is the best use. I mean, there's, you can have offices, you can have residential, because it's really it's.
Up there, that's the, there's re, uh.
They're turning it around, but, yes, it's surrounded.
The Guajardo Building, which one's the Guajardo Building?
The what?
The Guajardo Building. And Dr. Guajardo's building right there on the?
Yeah, that, that's further to, to the express, expressway.
Okay, this is toward the back, back?
Yes, and you can put the, the one with the colored map. Now, you see, that's where the property's at. The Guajardo Building, or that hospital, they're all along the expressway, but this starts the very back. It's a little strip of land that was left of, of all the tracks available there, so there's really no other best use that we believe, other than mini-storage.
It helps our tax base, property values go up there. Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody else want to speak on this matter? If not, can we have a?
Move to close.
A motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Tryani, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Tryani, can I have a second?
Second, items ten and eleven.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item twelve, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash zero zero nine dash S, to allow a light commercial-specific use in a general retail for one point three eight two acres of Tandy Acres subdivision located near seventy-seven eighty-three and Tandy Road.
Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this would be on automatic car wash off the expressway and on Tandy. The entrances will be on, on Tandy Road. Plans and Zoning Commission will unanimously approve this application to you.
Okay, this is a public hearing, anybody want to comment on this?
Is this the same area that always been having problems finding a tenant because of the, because of the road and the?
No, no.
They wanted a daycare there, and they wanted a?
No, no, this is right on the expressway.
Right.
Right behind the, the stripes, like the?
Way before the, the tracks.
Between the hotel and, and stripes?
Yes.
We have so many car washes, how do they stay in business? Well, anyway. Okay, this is a public hearing?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Gowan, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item, I mean, action item?
Move to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Camarillo makes the motion, Commissioner Samora seconded it, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item thirteen?
Item thirteen, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty-ten dash six oh six dash CU, to allow conditional use permit to sell on premises alcohol for lots eight and nine of block ninety-three of Brownsville original townsite located at ten, at twelve oh three East Adams Street.
This, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, this is a web restaurant on Adams Street, right near the intersection of Adams and Twelfth Street.
Okay, this is a public hearing? Anybody want to make a comment? If not, can I have a motion to close?
Move to close.
Motion to close by Commissioner Camarillo, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Samora, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. This is an action item?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, Commissioner Samora, second by Commissioner Camarillo, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Public comments. We have four, okay? Y'all know the rules, least direct comments to the chair, no personal attacks, the first one, and you got a three-minute time limit. Juan Mejia, the commission cannot respond, please, Mr. Mejia, you're welcome to come up here. The commission cannot respond, so please understand that. You're welcome to talk to management if you have a problem.
Well, I'm just the mailman bringing the mail. Public hearing in action, Lomax Road, eight oh three, Habaleros Estates, or Old Highway Seventy-seven. Melissa, you can get together with people and talk to our manager, or meet the water. How can you help bring the sewer, help put sewer there? Now, Lomax Road, we need two more speed bumps. Mr. Kevler, help us with one, but we need two more, right by Mr. Naranso's place, it's a big machine shop. We've got slow-moving cranes, in and out all day long. The traffic's doing sixty miles an hour there. The traffic's doing 60 miles an hour there. You're gonna find a way to slow this traffic down there before somebody gets smashed there big time. A quarter mile back, it's a neighborhood, also needs speed bumps, one. It's a mile, Lomax Road's a mile long stretch. And we haven't seen no action over there. We've got $43 million in American REIT, I'm pretty sure you can put some money over there. Oh yeah, we've got something, you done something in Lomax Road? They raised our rates up on the garbage, 50 cents more. I hope you can get something done, get the sewer going or the street lights on Lomax Road. And the speed bump, Mr. Kevler, help us with one, but we need two more. And they really appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mejia.
That's it. See you next month.
Okay. Mr. Rodeste, Robin Rodeste from 1225 Pluton.
Robin Rodeste, 1225 Pluton. Thank you, sir. First of all, let me get straight to things. Today's rains in the Galaxia subdivision didn't cause no floodings and that's a thank you to the public works for working in that area time and time over to try to keep that off. And I'm thanking them. And another big thank you is for the GT paving for finishing that old military highway. They did a great job. I talked to the foreman. The only reason they took a little longer was because of the rain delays and that's the reasons. The Galaxia citizens, and I've been speaking to many of them, have been having some problems with robberies and people wandering in the areas. And it would be a very good idea if we have a new project instead of the, what is called the Neighborhood Watch Program. That is not working at all. And there has to be a new project and I might call it Ojos, Eyes, in which a poster can be given to all individual citizens that live in that area with the telephone numbers, especially the 548-7000, which I use a lot, the 911. And also, there is a 546 TIPS. A lot of people I talk to don't even know the first number, the 548-7000. They can communicate with the police department and get involved helping each other. I do help with the people there all the time. Second thing is that seems like some neighbors in the Galaxia subdivision work very hard to keep their properties extremely clean. They're very proud of their properties and there should be some sort of an award for that subdivision. And I think all subdivisions should have some small committee in which they can give out an award, a little plaque, and to be proud so other people can do that once a month. And I think that would be very nice. And another little thing is that I do try to help the people there. They do come. There was a man called Mr. Peña and I think he's watching. He asked me to talk about La Lomita Light that was broken there and I talked to Mr. Peterson already. He already communicated that he's gonna check on that right away. So I do thank Mr. Peterson for that too. And that's all I have to do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Rodeste. That was a positive report, we appreciate it. Alejandro Piñera?
Buenas tardes, honorable Mayor and Commissioner. Bienvenida, eh? Yo soy Alejandro Piñera y vengo...
Si me hace favor de hablar en el micrófono.
Soy Alejandro Piñera y vengo en representación de todas las personas que viven en la área de la calle McHenry. Aquellas personas que necesitamos usar la banqueta. Una banqueta que trabajé muy duro en la administración del señor Treviño para sacar esa banqueta con el objetivo de que caminen los niños a la escuela Perkins y nosotros los ancianos que tenemos por combinación médica caminar. Yo le dije a ella la muestra para que ustedes puedan apreciar de lo que yo me quejo. Es algo que si ustedes lo ven, ustedes se van a dar cuenta que no es algo que solamente estamos por estarlos molestando ustedes, no. Es una necesidad y un peligro para los niños caminar por la calle porque no se puede caminar por las banquet, por la banqueta. Es demasiado y llena de ramas, llena de basura y llena de zacate. Es algo que, como digo, ¿para qué se fue tanto trabajo, tanto esfuerzo y tanto dinero para usar una banqueta para aparcar carros arriba o para tirar basura? Entonces yo esa es la razón que estoy preguntando a ustedes. ¿A dónde puedo acudir para esto? He hablado a diferentes instituciones y en ninguna parte he tenido la respuesta que merecemos como ciudadanos. Porque si dicen Brownsville, Beautiful Brownsville, tenemos que decirlo todos, no nada más unas personas y los demás no. Tenemos que todos porque todos somos iguales. Y es por eso que les pido de favor que me digan si no estoy tocando la puerta exacta, díganme a dónde. ¿A dónde voy a tocar la puerta para que se pueda limpiar el área donde nosotros caminamos y los niños que van a la escuela Perkins puedan caminar pues sobre la banqueta?
Señora Piñera, si puedo sugerir, en gran parte es la responsabilidad del propietario, no de la ciudad.
Yo sé. Eso yo lo entiendo.
Nosotros no podemos estar obligando a cada ciudadano que haga lo que debe de ser, eh? Ellos deben hacer por su propia cuenta. ¿Cómo se ponen basura en la banqueta?
Pero yo, perdone, pero yo como vecino o como residente no puedo mandar la orden. Tiene que haber alguien.
¿No tiene comité ahí en el barrio?
No, para esto no.
Organice un comité para que ellos enforcen de perdido una calidad de vida que es aceptable para el barrio porque en gran parte esa es responsabilidad de los propietarios.
Mire, imagínense ahí cómo puede uno caminar por ese lugar.
Bueno, ahí se debe mutar la persona.
Pero no lo hacen como le digo.
Si lo reporta con el, entonces se le da una notificación y lo obligan que lo corte, pero si se comunica con él, él le va a ayudar, okay?
Está bien.
Gracias, señora.
Muchas gracias.
Will you help her, please?
We know who it is and we've cited him in the past.
Thank you. Okay, that's the end of the public comments, then we go to...
We have one more person.
One more?
Ms. Flores? Teri Flores?
Teri Flores? Come on. Come on down. Hello, Teri.
Hi, Teri Flores, Brownsville. I'm here to shed some light before you guys vote on this horrendous condemnation on Arizona law. And the only reason why is because to my astonishment, it was, I was shocked that our Attorney General Eric Holder hasn't read the bill. Janet Napolitano, our head of Homeland Security, hasn't read the law. And I just want you to take into account that the border, the United States border with Mexico is 1,954 miles long. Out of those miles, less than 700 miles, they're calling it effective control, meaning I think it has a fence. That's such a small area that's being controlled. Also, Arizona has the second largest border with Mexico and it's, most of it is unsecure. The Department of Justice has in 2008 published a report that Mexican gangs are the biggest organized crime that threatens the United States. A good chunk of that is happening in Arizona. It's happening here too. 6,000 foreign nationals are convicted felons housed in Arizona prisons at a cost of $150 million a year. That's taxpayer money that Arizona people have to pay out just to house these people. Arizona in 2009 experienced 316 kidnappings. That makes Phoenix, Arizona, one of the dangerous, if not the dangerous city here in the United States because of the border situation, because of the illegal situation that's happening there. And the majority of these kidnappings, these people, the majority are, were either illegal or they were connected with the drug trade. So it's a very dangerous situation. The narcotics prosecutions in Arizona raise, rise to 220, 202% just in the last 16 months. And that's not even including the smugglers. They were taking narcotics, they were bringing narcotics across our border under 500 pounds. Those are not even counted. And just this weekend, I'm sure you heard rumors about the massive killing that was gonna happen just across the border, not even to wear black. And here are the horrendous pictures. This is what happened just in our border. These people are getting murdered. Can you imagine what the people, the Mexican people are suffering? They're living a terrorized life. Can you imagine what Arizona is going through? They're being terrorized. They're afraid. I'm afraid. It, I, we had, I even had an incident of a gang attacking my own mom. They were robbing her. I was very lucky that they didn't even kill my mother.
Teri, your time's up.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that if you support...
Teri, if I can recommend, next time, you know, I understand, those issues are federal issues, they're not local issues.
But you're condemning Arizona.
I'm just making a suggestion. Although they're local issues, they're impacted somehow, okay? But if you make a recommendation next time, what you want us to do that would help us because you're citing all these federal problems that is beyond our control.
But why are you condemning Arizona's right to protect themselves? Every state has a right to protect themselves.
Anyway, if you want to make a recommendation, we're willing to listen to you.
Well, I don't think you should condemn it. It's none of our business. Every state has their right to protect themselves.
Thank you, Teri. Item 15.
Item 15, consideration in action to adopt resolution number 2010-32, expressing official intent to reimburse costs incurred to make improvements to the Brownsville Sports Park.
Honorable Mayor, members of the City Commission, we are requesting tonight for you to table this item. We want the 4A and the 4B agreements in place before we ask you to approve this resolution. We'll bring this back to you at a future date.
So moved. Second. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Next item.
Item 16, consideration in action to adopt resolution number 2010-033 to authorize the creation of an adopted yard program in the city of Brownsville.
Item 16, okay. Resolution?
Yes, I've just read it. I've just read the item.
So it's an action item?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I placed this on the agenda. I'm sure every single commissioner gets flooded with phone calls concerning weedy lots, overgrown yards, and I think that this would be a good program to address that. I'd like to take credit for it, but I can't do that. I did receive a phone call from a resident who just recently moved here from out of state and the state he was from has the same program and he said it's very successful. So I quickly contacted United Way, the Boy Scouts Program, Teen Court, and there are so many people who are interested in volunteering to participate in this program. And then I recalled that Commissioner Camarillo, under the Beautification Committee, had a senior day where they went out and helped many of our seniors in the community with the same issue. And this program is aimed at assisting the elderly and disabled and I'm gonna go ahead and pass this on to Commissioner Camarillo, who wrote the resolution and who is a member of the Beautification Committee.
Commissioner, well, you had the great idea, foresight to make this a year-round activity or an ongoing activity versus, you know, one time a year in which what we had done. So I commend you for that because again, we do have quite a bit of problems all over the city with weedy lots and as we heard part of the public comments, you know, these are some, you know, some of those residents that own those properties may be elderly or disabled. And so it just makes sense to be able to gather volunteers and different organizations to come together on a weekend and provide some assistance. And I think if we can do that frequently, then we'll see these problems kind of disappear and fade away. And so I appreciate your help bringing it to our attention. BBC and the Key Brownsville Beautiful will make sure we address it, we involve you all and the commission to help and participate as much as possible. So thank you for that.
Okay, this is an action item?
Will it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Samora. Can I have a second? Second by Commissioner Trani. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item.
Item 17, consideration in action to adopt resolution number 2010-034 in support of the Valley AIDS Council and Youth Community Services.
I placed this on the agenda after having numerous discussions with residents in the community about their concern with its effect on tourism, our economy, although it is something that is transpiring in Arizona. And some people believe that we should stay out of what happens in other states and other communities. I do believe that this...
Valley AIDS Council.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. I jumped the gun. Okay, Valley AIDS Council. Okay, we've heard their workshop. I think that they're doing a great job with what they've put together over at the old Boys and Girls Club. And I wanted to place a resolution of support for the services that they are providing and the services are going to grow throughout the city from my discussions from Bob Smith. So I hope that the City Commission approves this resolution in support of Valley AIDS Council and the many services they provide here.
Okay, this is an action item?
Will it approve?
Motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Gowen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item 18.
Consideration in action to adopt resolution number 2010-035 condemning recently enacted Arizona SB 1070, which permits Arizona state officials to inquire into the immigration status of any individual based on reasonable suspicion.
Okay, didn't mean to jump the gun there, but continuing on what I was saying, many people believe that we need to do something to express our discontent for this bill. I understand that there are some opinions out there that we need to stay out of what happens in other states and other communities. But I do that this does, I do believe this affects us and our economy. We have heard about chambers in Mexico who have boycotted businesses along the border. And as you can see, I did read it, ma'am, and I do have a copy right here that has notes and highlights if you'd like to look at it.
Please do not interrupt.
I didn't interrupt you while you were speaking.
Commissioner, go on.
So I hope that our fellow city commissioners here will support this resolution and I'd like to pass it on to anyone else who may have some comments on it.
Okay, anybody want to say anything on this matter? Okay, this is an action item.
Mayor, I will say something. You know, I think it's really, want to support the resolution. I think this is something that the city should voice their concern about. You know, personally, I think this is something that's just, it goes back to the whole border wall issue and, you know, policy made by others which is just, makes no sense. It's the worst thing that I think the country could actually do, but such as it is and it's here. I think the state of Arizona, again, their leadership or the lack of, really shows by what they did. And I say that to whomever directly or indirectly. I think it's the worst thing they could do. I think it's wrong. And, you know, as we were talking earlier, I think it goes to show that there's just a lot of people that are just, they don't know what it's like to live on the border or near a borders community. And the issues that we all face and our families and the heritage and the culture that we all share, they don't know. And so to do something like this and enact such a law is just horrible.
Okay, this is an action item? It's a resolution, can I have a motion?
Should I make a comment?
Certainly. Very briefly.
My name is Mr. Barrera, I'm from Brownsville. More than 100 million Mexicans may soon be empowered to collect welfare, social benefits, and free schooling paid by you and I, the taxpayers. We have no business meddling in the affairs of another state. They have their right to take care of their own. That's what we need to do and take care of our own people. We have illegals coming in, going to our schools, go to any school. Go to any school in Las Pritas. Go to any school in Las Pietas, at Cameron Park, and you see all the illegal cars coming, not the cars, but the cars coming in that are from, dropping illegal students here so they can get a, get an education. We've had enough of that. It's none of our business, commissioners, for us to meddle into the affairs of Arizona. They have their problems. I know that it's a federal stature that should be enacted to keep those outside, but we just can't take it. The, the more you give these people, the more they want and the more they're coming in. I'm against passing a resolution or whatever you call it here that you support. You're against the law that is being enacted in Arizona. Thank you.
Your point's well taken. Thank you.
Mayor, let me just say something. Mr. Barrera, you being a man, a former educator of this community, to say that illegals, individuals should not go to school, whether it be primary, secondary, or post-secondary, is, is really something else, and I can't respect that. Every child that's here, whether they are illegal or not, has a right to education and, and healthcare. And I truly believe that. Because you know what? They're going to change how we do things, and they're going to help this community and, most importantly, the state. And so I, I can't believe, hearing this from you, an educator, talking about the thousands of illegal children or not, I don't know, that are in schools right now that are trying to learn to better themselves, to have a better day for them and their family, is just unfortunate.
Let the commissioner speak. Things are not as simple as they seem. When making a statement like a hundred million Mexicans are gonna be on welfare, well, I can assure you, there's a hu, there isn't a hundred million Mexicans, first of all, in the United States, I don't think. The, the other thing is, is that a lot of these Mexicans do contribute and don't reclaim their social security or their income tax, which is deducted from them. They do contribute in, in many other ways. And they keep our cost of living down. If it wasn't for the Mexicans, you'd probably be paying ten dollars for a tomato, you know? I mean, those are the, the real facts. I mean, it's, it's, it's okay to, you know, to say a whole race should be extinguished. That's how people rationalize it when Hitler came into power. You know, yes, it is. It's the same thing here. You're profiling and you're singling out a race, okay? Just because some people feel threatened by it or they're prejudiced or, for whatever reason. I think that's an injustice morally, morally, okay? And I think it goes against all the principles of this country.
It's about security. These people are...
I, I think that's, that's, they're using that as an excuse or a reason to support the wall, support those efforts.
The person, the person here in Brownsville that gets killed by those people is blood on your hands.
That's twice I've heard the terms, "these people," "those people," and I take issue with that. Because these people sustain our economy and they, they are our workforce.
Evil elements, man. I'm talking about the evil elements.
We have evil elements to our American citizens.
Hold on, real quick.
There are some people in there cross...
Commissioner Atkinson, Commissioner Atkinson.
Let me say something. You, you, you mentioned Mexicans and all that, but what about all the Canadians that are coming through, taking all our, wait a minute, let me finish talking. What about all the Canadians that come through here? And they don't need to go through all the hoopla that the Mexicans need to come through. They, all, all a Canadian needs is a passport to, to cross to the border. And everybody knows, well, doesn't matter, because you have Canadians that are here, illegal, taking our jobs too. So, you know, you, you, you complain about the Mexican, but what about on the northern border where there, where there's a free...
I think that's...
Well, so why aren't you, well, so those people, so what are you talking about? Those people, Canadians or, or who are you talking about?
Illegal, they're...
Okay, so you don't think there's, you don't think, let me, let me ask you, you don't think, can you stop talking for one second, please?
I'm from Canada.
Man, but let me tell you something. Did you know the drug trade's coming also from Canada? They've all known there's open borders over there. So we got a lot of, of drugs coming through the northern border.
Teddy, Teddy, let him speak, please.
Let me finish. So, you know, before you judge anybody, you gotta know the whole story. Where Mexicans, where Mexicans or people from the Latin countries come, they gotta go through three or four levels to get a document to come across this bridge, the, the US. Where a Canadian, all he needs is a passport. And all, all, all the, the people from nine-one-one, they came, a lot, most of them came through the northern border. So, you know, before you say something, and they had legit passports. Nine-one-one happened with people who had legit passports. They weren't here illegally. They had legit passports and legit leases to come in. So, you know, we're judging people when we shouldn't.
Okay, this is, this is an action item.
To think.
This is an action item? Can I have a, a motion?
Would you approve?
Motion to approve of Commissioner Samora, second by Commissioner Tureny. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
I'm gonna abstain because I have not read this, this bill or whatever.
Item nineteen. Item nineteen.
For the relocation and replacement of runway seventeen visual approach slope indicator with an FAA-provided precision approach path indicator at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, the purpose of this agenda item is to request the City Commission to consider and act on an agreement with the FAA that allows for an upgrade of an important piece of equipment at the airport. At the current time, the airport has what's called a VASI, Visual, Visual Approach Slope Indicator. It helps guide the pilot in his approach when he's making the landing. What we're proposing to do with the agreement of the FAA and to be paid for by the FAA is to install a PAPI in place of a VASI. PAPI allows not only for the same thing that a VASI does, but some additional things too, giving, for example, the, the pilot not only an up and down indication, but also a sideways indication to make sure they've got the plane, which may be landing a hundred miles an hour, the plane landing in a straight line on the runway, which is obviously important for passenger safety and so forth. This is a particularly important thing because it helps us to upgrade for the benefit of airlines and air, and pilots, the systems that we use at the airport to help attract airlines and so forth and make it safe to land. The amount, the funding in this agreement that is called for allows the FAA, which, and it is their equipment, to install the PAPI. And the funding is actually coming from another arm of the FAA to reimburse us for this cost. I'll be happy to ask any questions. Staff recommends approval.
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion approved and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Next item?
Item twenty, consideration and action on a, on a renewal of a ground lease for the Hunt Pan Am Field Base Operations at Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Mayor, Members of the Commission, as you may recall, Hunt Pan Am Aviation is a, a long-term fixed base operator at the Brownsville Airport, has been there for many, many decades and really one of the, the first FBOs that operated from there. This lease is being generated in order to help support additional investment into Hunt Pan Am Aviation by two new people who will be board members on Hunt Pan Am. That's Bob Steenbach and Bob Harper, both of whom fly from the Cameron County Airport at the present time and own a couple of seven-twenty-sevens. They'll be key investors in Hunt Pan Am Aviation. One of the keys to making their investment possible is to give them assurance that their investment, they'll be able to recoup it by continuing the business for a period of time. That's why they've asked for the extension of their particular lease. This is a ground-only lease. We don't own the building. They own the building. We just leased the land. Represents a total of forty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-three dollars and sixty cents per year in revenue for the airport, and it is had, contains a CPI adjustment clause so that every three years, by virtue of the CPI indicator, the, the, the lease rate is adjusted upwards typically. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. It's an action item?
Would you approve?
Motion to approve, Commissioner Camarillo, second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-one?
Item twenty-one, consideration and action on the Brownsville Community Improvement Project Funding Recommendations for Fiscal Year 2010.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation requests your approval on the projects that were recommended for funding as presented earlier in the workshop.
Okay, this is an action item?
Would you approve?
Second. A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-two?
Thank you. Thanks, sir.
Item twenty-two, consideration and action to request funding in the amount of thirty-thousand dollars for the Fourth Annual July Salute to Freedom Fireworks Display that will take place on Saturday, July third, 2010.
Mayor Commissioners, as you can see in the packet, we have a letter from the Fourth of July Celebration Committee for the purchase of the fireworks display. And I do wanna clarify something real quick. It'll be on July third, Saturday, not the fourth. Larry Joko from the committee.
At night, I'm sure it's at night, but I mean...
The July third, which would be Saturday night instead of a Sunday.
Okay, this is an action item?
Would you approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-three?
Why not a Sunday, though?
Needless to say, Mayor Commissioners, y'all are all invited and we hope that you will partake in the day's activities. Start about four o'clock and we'll continue until we finish that.
We, I'm sorry. We chose, we chose Saturday night. We have a Bravo exhibition game, or excuse me, an actual scheduled game. There's a lot of activities at the park on Saturday night, and we feel that that's a perfect night. It'll be a major event at that park. So, and that's another thing, too. They wanted to, a lot of the committee and different people wanted to do it on a Saturday instead of Sunday.
Sunday's Family Day, one, two, oh, I don't like the city wants to pay that much overtime. The other reason.
We all always do a great job, so we look forward to it.
Yeah, it'll be a lot of fun, hopefully. Thank you all very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Next item?
Item twenty-three, consideration and action to authorize the execution of a memorandum of understanding between the Brownsville and Matamoros Bridge Company and the Brownsville Police Department.
Mayor, Members of the State Commission, good evening. We're asking the Brownsville State Commission to approve a memorandum of understanding for the installation of four security cameras by the police department at the Brownsville Matamoros International Bridge, which is a privately-owned bridge. B and M Bridge Company is the proper owner of that. These cameras were bought with Homeland Security funding. It will allow us to place four cameras, two per, each per toll booth, to be able to photograph license plates of vehicles and drivers that are exiting the United States or actually exiting the city into Mexico. This will allow us to help us with some of our criminal investigations, especially in the area of Lautepeh.
Joe Galvano retired from B and M, right? Who took his place?
I don't know, sir, did he did? I, I don't know. I thought that he was still there.
This is an action item?
But if he did, then we'll, we'll go ahead and change the MOU to reflect the proper persons. We have been working with Mr. Galvano through, through this.
Would you approve? We have a motion with Commissioner Atkinson. Can we have a second? Second by Commissioner Tureny. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-four?
Hold on, real quick, real quick, I forgot. Was, you said that was a grant from who?
Homeland Security funding.
With, Homeland, I'll abstain from that one.
From two thousand five.
I'll second.
I'm sorry about that.
Chief, is, are these...
Don't want any problems.
Are these cameras gonna be monitored twenty-four-seven or is just recording and then...
They're gonna be recording and then we're able to, to retrieve the data.
Gonna go track?
Yes, sir.
When and do you need to, okay, thank you.
I'll abstain.
Okay, item twenty-four?
He's gonna abstain.
Abstain.
I'm abstaining from this.
From this one? Okay.
Item twenty-four?
Item twenty-four, consideration and action to authorize the Brownsville Police Department to accept a selective traffic enforcement program, click it or ticket grant award in the amount of ten thousand dollars.
Mayor, Members of the City Commission, text out as the word is a ten thousand dollar grant for step enforcement during the Memorial Day weekend, and I'm asking the commission to accept such grants so that we could initiate our efforts for the Memorial Day weekend.
Would you approve?
We have a motion to approve, and we have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-five?
Thank you.
Thank you, chief.
Item twenty-five, consideration and action to award a contract for pay parking construction improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport.
Honorable Mayor, City Commission, staff recommendation is to award a contract for pay parking equipment improvements for the Brownsville South Padre Island International Airport to Herrera and Hunt of Los Trenos, Texas, the law responsible bidder, for a total bid amount of one-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, one-hundred-and-sixty-four dollars and sixty-one cents. Funding is in place for this procurement, and it is recommended by the consulting engineering firm and the airport.
Okay, this is an action item?
Would you approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Camarillo. Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Atkinson. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Item twenty-six?
Item twenty-six, consideration and action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of camera surveillance system for the Brownsville Police Department.
Staff recommendation is to award a contract for purchase, delivery, and installation of camera surveillance systems for the Brownsville Police Department to American Surveillance Company of Brownsville, Texas, in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents. This, this procurement includes the second and third-year equipment maintenance agreement, and all the hardware, software, and the training will be provided by the vendor. Subsequent years of maintenance and support will be provided on an annual basis after the third year. The completion time for the installation and configuration is sixty consecutive calendar days as per the project specifications, and funding is in place. There's, there's just a change in the funding. I got a, I got an email from the police chief and also from the finance director, so I have, I have a modification on the, on the funding, and it says that funding for this procurement will be coming out of Fund Twenty-Eight, which is forfeiture fund, and it will be for fifty-one thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents, and that's from account twenty-eight dash three-ten dash nine-forty-two, and from general fund through a budget amendment that will contribute a hundred thousand dollars, and the funding source for the one-hundred thousand dollars will be, will be coming out of the two-thousand-and-three CO Fund Fifty-Eight.
Would you approve? We have a motion to approve. Can I have a second?
Second.
I'm sorry.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Camarillo. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Can I have a motion adjourned?
So move.
There's, there's...
Mr. Luna, one quick question on the...
Twenty-seven.
Mayor, I have a question real quick. On the one-year warranty and then two-year equipment, is that the, the manufacturer's warranty or is that something that the company's going to do?
The first year, it's included.
Right, no, it is included, but I'm, but I'm saying the second-year equipment maintenance, is that for the, from the manufacturers or is that from the company?
It's, that's from the company that is, that is representing the manufacturer.
Okay.
Okay, item twenty-seven?
Item twenty-seven, consideration and action to authorize work order number ten for landfill engineering services, master agreement for model design permit and construction quality assurance of city landfill gas collection system project.
Staff recommendation is to award task order number ten for landfill engineering services, master agreement for model design permit and construction quality assurance of the city landfill gas collection system project to SCS Engineer and environmental consultants, Consultants and Contractors of Houston, Texas, in the amount of two hundred and forty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty dollars. And this, um, this gas modeling, uh, project, or this, this, uh, task order will cover, will cover the services from SCS Engineering on a grant that was awarded back in, uh, if you, if you look on your agenda, back in two thousand and nine, uh, the city, the city, um, was allocated one million, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars for this program. So that's...
Thank you, Robert.